Committee of a whole, this is for Tuesday, August seventeenth. I'd like to call this meeting order if we can all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing roll call, all council members are present. Is there any public comment at this time? No public comment at this time. Let's just go right into the committee meeting items, which we do have a few additives to let you know. What do we have, four, five, maybe six?
We have four items that I'm aware of. We're going to be talking about an informal resident request about a garden potential near Matson Park. I have a couple of updates that I'm going to give and then discussing an additional portion of the Main Street curbing of the street project.
Make a motion to accept as presented.
We don't need one.
We don't, okay.
Uh, let's just go right into the committee items then. Committee, uh, meeting items, number one, liquor store updates. And I'd like everyone to welcome our new liquor store manager. Um, I'm horrible at names, but I never forget a face, so.
But this is Kevin Morelli. He is our new liquor store manager. He has been here for about a month and a half, um, doing a great job, getting acclimated to the store, to the people, and to our great customers.
And as long as, you know, the longer and the more we see of you, then, then I'll never forget your name. You're the new kid on the block. So, welcome, sir.
All right, well, I'd like the mayor and members of the council, I'd like to start out just again by introducing myself as the new liquor store manager for the city of Isanty. Uh, prior to coming to Isanty, I was employed by the city of St. Anthony Village Liquor Operation for twenty-eight years. Started as a part-time clerk and worked my way up through all the positions. Assistant store manager, store manager, and then for the last sixteen years, assistant liquor operation manager.
So you literally started from the bottom and worked your way to the top after how many years?
Twenty-eight years.
Holy Hannah.
Literally, from the bottom. Enjoyed my time there. Um, an opportunity came up here and went for it, and fortunately, I got it. So, I'm happy to be here. Um, a little, a little bit more about myself and the, and my thought, my philosophies and regarding a liquor store operation. Um, I wholeheartedly believe in the concept of opening a small liquor operation. Um, that was reinforced to me approximately five years ago at a city council work session that we did. We were tasked, um, by going in front of the council to discuss the importance of a liquor operation by not using numbers. And for us, that's, we thought that would be impossible because we live in a numbers world in the, in the liquor industry and liquor operations. And what we ultimately came up with that is that as a liquor operation, we felt we were just as important as any other department in the city. Yeah, we're not saving lives like police and fire. We're not fixing potholes and water main breaks, but as a liquor operation, we see more residents than all the other departments combined. Uh, so it just gave us a chance to talk to more residents. Some residents would come down to the liquor store to ask us questions about what's going on in the city. Because some just aren't comfortable going to a council meeting and stating their name and address and being on camera. So, uh, we felt it was important that we get across to our staff that they just be, that they know as much as possible what's going on in the city. We have them read our city newsletters. We invite other departments to our, to our department meetings and speak of what's going on in the city. So, um, we thought that's a huge benefit and, and we walked, and I, and I actually use that to this day in all my orientations I do, including my most recent one here. My first new hire that we had here, I, I brought that along because I think it's super important that they, that they know that they're just not a liquor store employee, that they're, they're an employee of the city. Um, when we're, you know, one big team and, um, so just to be aware of what's going on in the city. Obviously, we get a lot of questions right now about the new store, um, and that's exciting. But I think going forward, we'll probably, you know, people will have more questions and also want the staff to be as educated as possible. So, I'm, like I said, onboarding and training, I, I take it very serious. Uh, I, a few years ago, we were just having a lot of turnover issues, like a lot of businesses. And I just looked in the mirror and thought, we have to change up what we do. So, the onboarding, we really slowed down. I, 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 it's basically a three-day process we used at St. Anthony that, um, I'd like to carry over here. Um, maybe not three days, but just take our time. Just let them know that they, that again, they are not just a part-time liquor store employee. They are a part of the city and part of the team and, um, stewards of the community and, and we want a concierge level of service at the stores and, and just, you know, make them feel a part of the team. So, we, we will stress the onboarding and the training at the liquor store quite a bit. You know, I just have some other numbers to go over for some, some updates. May, June, and July of twenty-one, we're down versus last year, which is expected because of the record-setting pandemic year we had. Uh, so we're down about thirty-eight thousand, some change. Um, sales for July overall are only down eighty-nine hundred dollars. So, um, I think that's, I, that's impressive to do what we've done so far this year, going against those numbers. And, uh, and that's, it's pretty good. We'll hopefully keep that going and get that up a little bit. Uh, we think daily's sales have increased a little bit. We've noticed a little more traffic. Um, there's a neighboring municipal that has an extensive remodeling project going on. So, we think we're getting a, a little bit of traffic for that. So, hopefully, maybe we can gain some new customers in the process. And last but not least, we're beginning the process of letting some of our slower-moving products run down a little bit in preparation for moving. Some of our wine doesn't seem to turn as much as other products, so we're gonna, we just wanna try to move as little as possible, work smarter, not harder. Uh, we're also preparing for dismantling of the gravity shelving inside our reach-in beer cooler, uh, to make room for our temporary shelves that Public Works is making for us. So, we've, uh, gonna move some things into our beer cave because we won't be able to carry as many products in that cooler, um, because of the space. So, we'll have to hibernate some of the slower-moving packages and we'll take a look at some of our reports and make those decisions. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll ask a question. What was your first name again?
Kevin.
Kevin, Kevin, and I'd probably like to pull Mr. Becker into this question as well. I don't remember being that far down in the pandemic, Mike. I mean, or did, did the liquor store sink way down during the pandemic?
No, so during, during twenty-twenty, sales were through the roof.
All right.
March, April, May, um, May, I think, was the highest month, if I'm remembering off the top of my head. May was the highest grossing month we'd ever had.
Okay.
Um, the expectation was that we'd come into twenty-twenty-one and we'd actually see a dip that, you know, more people go back to bars. Fewer people would be buying beer to drink at home, like they had been doing in twenty-twenty. So, we kind of figured that we'd be, we'd be down. Now, for the three months, uh, May, June, July in twenty-twenty-one, we are down about thirty-eight grand. But prior to that, we were up thirty thousand dollars. So, for the whole year through July, we're only down eighty-nine hundred against twenty-twenty, which is, which is kind of bonkers. And twenty-twenty was a particularly good year. We, we were almost right on four million dollars of total revenue. And we were not supposed to hit, um, I'm supposed to say this. At the new store, in year three, we were projected to get to four point five million.
We're hitting it already.
We are almost there already, and we haven't even left our current store. So, twenty-twenty was good, and twenty-twenty-one is also proving to be very good for us.
I think it's done us some good to continue that military discount. I think that was a good move by the council. I think they're seeing that. I think they're seeing a lot of community, how would you put it? Community orientatedness, I guess, even through a liquor store. I mean, they're seeing different things that the city's trying to, we want them to make it feel like it's their liquor store, so to speak, you know? And I, I think we're doing a good job on it. I, I think that new liquor store looks ginormous, but.
It's your liquor store.
No, it's our liquor store.
No, I didn't mean yours, like yours, I mean, like the community.
Yeah, it's our liquor store. And I'll emphasize "our" by the council, the committee, the, or the, uh, community.
Residents.
The staff, the residents, I mean, and all of the above. It's our liquor store. And that, I think they see that, and I think it's, I think it's paying off.
So, Kevin, I got a question. With you being down there, you had multiple grocery stores, gas stations selling three-two. How did that affect your store?
Well, it definitely affected our store, uh, as a council member. We had, um, we were the first municipal liquor op, liquor operation to have to deal with the new big box that moved into the cities, um, approximately five years ago now. Um, and that, that was tough. Uh, there's, there's no doubt about it that. We, we didn't expect that to take that big of a hit. Um, we kind of took things for granted, like a lot of people did in, in our industry, um, that had to start dealing with them as well, uh, once they started opening more stores. But you're right, the competition, if, if you walked out, our liquors, one of our liquor stores, we had two liquor stores. And if you walked out of one of them, you would hit probably up to five of them within three miles, five liquor stores. And like you mentioned, two grocery stores and gas stations that did sell three-two. So, it was a learning experience for us. Um, we, we, we bottomed out after about two years of, of the big box being in, and we kind of stuck to our guns. We had a, a supportive council that, that knew we just didn't wake up one morning and decide we, we're not going to make any more money. You know, we had, uh, we stuck to our guns with customer service. We didn't try to compete with them price-wise because no one can. They're the, the largest liquor store, the chain in the, in the country, and, and that's what they want you to try to do. They want you to try to, to match them price for price. And, and that wasn't our, that wasn't our deal, and it, and it shouldn't be. It should be a, a clean, bright, safe shopping experience with some customer service provided by the staff as well. And like, so we started hearing from more and more people the last couple of years that just didn't like going to that big box anymore. It just didn't feel welcome there. Um, you know, you'll, e- even, even in Isanty, in the short time I've been there, and like when I left St. Anthony, uh, when I left St. Anthony, I probably had the least educated staff in terms of product knowledge, um, that I've had in my career there. But they were just super friendly with the staff. You know, first-name basis, we do carryouts when needed, um, and, and people just really enjoyed that. So, so yeah, the, the competition was, was great, great down there. And we just, you know, you have a policy, you have policies, you have your beliefs, and you have your, your system, and you just stick with it. You have to make some changes along the way, there's no doubt about it. But, um, but yeah, the competition, there, there was a lot. The three-two did, it, it did affect us because there's more and more three-two beer that is sold now than ever.
See, and my question, the reason I ask is, you know, uh, Colburns had came in and asked for that. And, you know, inevitably, sooner or later, it's gonna happen. I mean, I was in Cub Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, I don't even know what day it is. And I noticed they sell, they're selling three-two up in Cambridge. So, do you think by allowing Cub or Colburns to have three-two, that would hurt our bottom line?
It would, it would hurt because I, I, I'm guessing that if you, you know, where do you draw the line with, with three-two? If you allow Colburns, or if you allow one store and, and some others in town want to do it, you know, where do you draw the line? So, i- i- I think if everyone starts selling it, it would affect. Like I said, there's more and more packages. I just got an email today from one of our distributors, and they had it broken down, and, and one of the, the sheets was three-two options. And there was, I think I counted twenty-four different three-two packages that gas stations or grocery stores are allowed to sell right now.
So, you're opening up a can of worms, is what you're saying? If you let one, then?
I, I believe so, yeah. Because again, how do you tell one yes and the others no? So, it didn't, and what, that would affect the bottom line.
Any other questions for Kevin by the council? Again, welcome, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll move on to E two then, the permit penalty discussion. Councilman Gordon?
Yeah, so I mean, I think the reason I wanted to bring this up was, it kind of had to do with the storage facility that we were discussing, you know, two meetings ago, I think it was now. But, um, you know, we've had some issues come up like that in the past, where we've had people that didn't follow the rules to begin with. And we've been, well, the majority of the council has been adamant about the rules need to be followed, and there's no room for forgiveness and, you know, this kind of thing. So, um, is there, you know, right now, I think the fee is double, right? Is kind of the penalty, the standard, what's written in our stuff right now?
I'll let Sheila speak on this one. Yeah, thank you. Uh, right now, uh, the way the building code is written is that we can charge an investigation fee, and it cannot exceed the price of the permit. So therefore, it's a double fee, for lack of a better word, but it is called an investigation fee.
Okay, all right. So, you know, I mean, that was kind of in the past. I mean, that's what previous councils have, have decided was the right approach to that. And I don't know, when you say investigation fee, I mean, is there an actual investigation that goes along with that to kind of catch up on, you know, the stuff that they're behind on? And, and go out and take a look at what they've done so far and dig into it further and that kind of thing?
Yeah, usually the investigation fee part of it is how we can double fee them. And then also, yeah, because we have to go out, if we get a complaint or you see it, you know, we have to go and verify that.
So, that's paying for staff time, essentially.
For staff time, they did not use a per, you know, apply for a permit, or they need a variance, or, you know, what have you. Now, they need plan review, you know, those types of things.
Right, which they, I mean, all that should be covered by the initial part of the fee too, but there's probably more work involved than going back and starting, you know, from something that's already partially done and trying to figure it out. So, anyway, my question was, I mean, I'd like to see us have something in place that, you know, we think is enough of a penalty to where it's not just a slap on the wrist. And it will deter people from, from not following the rules, but at least to, to have an option for people to, to get on the right track. And something that we can all live with that, you know, would allow for redemption, I guess, in, in some of these cases. You know, is there a number that could be put on that? Or is it just kind of more of a strict, you didn't follow the rules, you're out of luck? You know, I mean, that's, that's, I guess, where I'm, I'm questioning it.
So, here's my thought in that, Councilman Gordon, is if I were to go and, I don't know, say I was building a shed that's bigger than my house. And I was not allowed to do that, and I was told by staff not to do that, but I did it anyway. And now you're gonna tell me you're gonna charge me double the fee and all is forgiven. See where I'm going? I would gladly pay that double fee and move gone.
Well, and I'm, that's what I'm saying, is, does it need to be more? I mean, what, let's say if somebody did do that, is there a dollar amount that you could put on it? Or something that would satisfy the, the punishment? Do you know what I mean?
Well, my question is, what's the purpose of the double fee if it's never going to be used?
That's what my question was too, is what, what, we have this in place for situations like that. But anytime that we've seen it, we don't actually let that be the punishment, you know?
I get your point, yeah, I get the mayor's point here.
They can be fined, but that doesn't mean they can just go ahead and keep whatever they just did.
Right, so you're, you're, you're pretty much.
So, that's what that there is for. It's not for fine them and then let them keep their big building they just built illegally.
Right, yeah, I mean, if they didn't follow the rules and they're applying for variance and that kind of thing, no, I get that. And we can still deny it on those, on that basis, that, you know, it's not within our, our guidelines. But I mean, if it's, go ahead.
Yeah, so, we have done the double fee for people that are, um, they, they didn't pull a permit because they didn't know they had to, to put a window in. So, that hasn't had to come before council because they're still meeting code, they don't need a variance. So, more recently, the, the items that you're talking about have come to council because they need some different zoning approvals, also a building permit. So, those are the, the ones where we're not granting variance because they can't meet the hardship. And the double fee, yeah, we can, we can have them pay the double fee, but they still aren't meeting the code requirements.
So, they have happened, it's behind the scenes and we haven't seen it.
Yes, yeah, we've done it before. So, that is a process in place for when you kind of catch those things. And, you know, a lot of times, if it is just something like, oh, window, or, you know, something minor, and we don't have to do plan review for it, we don't necessarily do the double fee. They just say, oh, I didn't know, you know, and they come in. But it's more, more of the times that you do the double fee is when I, we've told them, you need a building permit, or you need this permit.
And they still keep going.
And they still do it anyway.
And so, then eventually, they come in and they do it.
Yeah, then eventually comes here, because when they need a variance or they need some type of zoning approval, then they have to come before planning commission and council. And at that time, you can say, yeah, we'll double fee you, you also pay for the zoning fee. We could also give you a fine, like in the zoning code, it says it's a two-hundred-dollar fine if you don't meet zoning requirements. It's also a misdemeanor. So, we don't charge people with that, but we could.
And I think we're all parents, or soon-to-be parents in the room. So, to put it in the, the guideline of if you told your children not to do something a half a dozen times and they still do it, you, you get pretty frustrated.
But these aren't our kids.
No, well.
No, but they're, but they're also.
They're citizens that we're here to serve.
Correct, but if, I'm using the pun for if you had a citizen or your child and you're telling them a half a dozen times not to do anything, it's kind of the same thing of frustration sets in, whether it's our residents or our children. It's just, that's, that's the pun that I'm using.
Here, here's something.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Here's, here's what I'm gonna tell you. You go to sell your house, and they come in and praise your house, or, you know, they come in to inspect your home or praise, appraise the value of your home.
Which is state mandated.
And they come in and they find that you did some work, and you don't have a permit, you weren't going to sell your house. And I found that out.
The hard way.
Well, not really the hard way, because I was in Athens township, and there was no permit, there was no, Athens at that time was in a transition away from the county to doing their own inspections. But there was no inspections being done, even though the county wasn't doing it. Okay? I got around it, but that's not the point. I worked, I've been doing this, and we're doing construction for fifty years. And I've, once I've had to pay a double permit for a plumbing permit. And my permit fee was thirty-five hundred dollars. So, it cost me seven thousand dollars for a thirty-five hundred dollar plumbing permit. Okay? And the, and the only reason was they did not receive it in time, by my inspection time. That was the only reason. I don't want to encourage anybody personally to do anything without following the line, guidelines. I, I wouldn't tell anybody they should do it. I wouldn't tell anybody that, you know, I don't believe in permits, just do it and go away, just make it go away. No, you, you can't do that.
That would be my inclination, is okay, I could pull, I could pay double this fee and get away with, continue going forward of doing something that I was told not to do.
Well, and it sounds like most of the time, that works fine and we never even know about it. So, you know, maybe that is fine, and then maybe, you know, it's just we have to take these situations as they come, but.
But there's a thing, this gentleman that started this, selling from Broadway Avenue. I wouldn't have had any problem giving him a variance to start with. What I had a problem with, he was told no, and he still did it. That's where I had a problem. And there again, they're not, these aren't children, but you have to treat these people like children when they do that. It's not just slap on the hand and go sit in the corner for an hour. I mean, realistically, and we gave that gentleman every opportunity to continue with that garage, and he did everything in his power, did not listen.
And on the storage unit?
And the storage unit is another issue.
It was just people around him that were just fed up.
I mean, I do get it that he's, he's providing this community with, with a vile business. I, I, I don't deny that. I, he did a fabulous job of cleaning it up, but he still went and did something without getting the variances for it. I have absolutely, I would have had no problem giving him a variance. But if, if the neighboring residents have a problem with it or neighboring businesses, then I, then no, you can't get your variance. So, by giving him that, we're gonna tick off six other people just to passify one? No, I, I can't do that. And I, I, I don't think we should put anything in an effect, because I think you're opening a can of worms that's telling people that they can do whatever they want when they want to.
And that doesn't. Fair.
And that isn't fair. I mean, the, I, I've stated this with, with all these issues coming in about having all these barnyard animals. You live in town, you give up, you give up some of those rights. If you want to do that, the county is, allows you to do it, go live in the colony. I could choose to live outside the city, but I prefer to live in the city. And that's why I still live in the city. You know, I spent forty years living out in the country, did two-mile-long driveway to plow with snow. That's an all-day, eight-hour task just to plow the driveway, you know? And then it's dirt roads, and it's this, and it's that. The, you know, like, you know, you got a well that goes bad, a septic that goes bad. You don't really have those issues when you live in town.
There's pros and cons, for sure.
There's pros and cons to all of it. But there's the choice that you can make, is if you don't like to follow the rules, then you go someplace that's gonna allow them. And that's just the way I look at it.
One thing I would like to add, I did ask the attorney on his thoughts on this item, and he did say that the processes that we do have in place is consistent with what other cities do. He said, your zoning code is there, and you have it there for a reason. You don't want to give people, property owners, a means of a way to buy their way around the code because of why do you have the code? It starts breaking down the core ethics of why you have that zoning code in the first place. And that could be a slippery slope of if our code didn't matter as long as you bought your way around it. So, he would, he just had a caution on that, just wanted to add.
Kind of what I was saying.
And trust me, I've seen him tear, make them tear down things in Minneapolis and St. Paul because they didn't follow the procedures.
I've seen it too, living there, being born and raised there. You have something to add, Councilman Wrigley?
Oh, I was, I, that guy sort of the garage and the people in the storage also. The people that had the, um, storage unit and the people, and that guy that had the garage over here, um, and you probably remember more than I do, Councilman Lundin. But I, I don't remember them coming more than once. I mean, to use the analogy, we have to tell them over and over and over again. Maybe he did come more than once, but I just remember the one time he showed up.
Not here.
He showed up here twice.
To the staff.
Yeah.
And emails.
So, it was happened more than once, is what you're saying?
Well, there's, it was emails between Sheila and Josie.
Big paper trail.
Big paper trail.
Of him being told no.
Then I don't, then I don't recall that.
Yeah, he was being told no time after time after time, and that's when he continued, is when they, this is an issue, we should bring it to the council. Then we heard about it.
Okay.
And that was, that was the situation there that actually still probably bothers me more than the storage facility. I can, I can understand the, the neighbors didn't want it, so you guys are, are more on that side. To me, it's, it's his property, he should be able to go up to the, to the very end of that property line and do whatever he wants. But, um, but, but I can understand where you guys are coming from on that. That guy, he was told no, you're right about that. But if you would have approved the variance anyway, regu, you know, if it weren't for that, that was more of my, my point, is that, well, if we would have approved the variance, then is there a punishment that would have sufficed? Then we could have let him continue to go, you know what I mean? So, um, but I mean, it sounds like for the most part, we, what we have in place is working fine, and I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. So, um, but I think there's probably a lot that we don't know about, and if that does get used, then it, then it works fine. So, I'm okay with that. But, uh, but that was more of my point, is that, you know, if there's a situation where we would grant a variance, you know, is there a punishment that, that would be able to let somebody continue? Um, but that was all.
If, if all, I, I don't think I'd have one bit of a problem with it. Actually, I know I wouldn't. If they followed all the rules, the guidelines, and, and took the proper steps, and they came asking for that variance, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But when you're told time after time not to do it, then you do it, then, you know, it's.
There was a, there was, just, just for example, there was a, a, a resident in, Mr. Carlson remembers this, where the, I think he lived right off of Main Street, and he wanted to put up a fence. And it was kind of an odd deal, and, you know, he came in and asked, and we all looked at it and said, you know, it's a variable situation. Absolutely, you know, we allowed it. I mean, I, I, like I said, you come in and, and, and it makes sense, it's gonna work. You know, be honest with you, the guy over on Broadway, all he was gonna do is increase everybody's property value over there.
Right, yeah.
And I totally agree with that.
No, that's what I'm saying, though, is that he did come in, you would have approved it other than the fact that he disobeyed the rules, right?
It's he would have had setbacks and certain rules.
And we could have, and we could have discussed it and, and made a happy medium work. But he, it, he totally just said, no, I'm just gonna do it anyway. I poured the cement because my tubing wasn't covered. Hey, throw a tarp over it, that's all you had to do. I mean.
I'm not saying he did it the right way, or that he, that he, I'm just saying that, you know, is there a number that you would have put on that and said, hey, if it's twenty thousand dollars, can he continue to go? You know what I mean?
But then, then again, you're just buying your way to continue on what he's gonna do.
Well, you would have approved it had he followed the rules the right way.
Very possibly, yes. I'm not gonna say a hundred percent, but very possibly, he could have. But we could have came into, we probably could have all came to a happy medium and met in the middle and made it work. That's the point.
We would have made that middle point fifty-fifty, as, as I always preach. Ms. Selma?
So, if I may, just to kind of recap that. So, like you said, we did have the conversation, no, you can't do it, doesn't meet the code, no, you can't do it, paper trail, whatever. Came in, he applied for variance before the board, and as a staff recommendation, we recommended you to deny that variance because there was no hardship or practical difficulties. So that, so saying you would have approved it, or one dove if they had come in it to begin with, um, we just have to be a little bit careful about that, because you do, by state statute, have to meet practical difficulties, and that wouldn't have made it.
Economic benefits, whether it be to his property or his neighboring properties, it's not a hardship reason, and legally, we take on a liability if we approve that.
So, that's why you say, see a lot of the variances I recommended denial for, because they're their own creation, and it's not really a hardship. A hardship would be something if, let's say, they had a hundred-year oak tree right in the middle of their property, and that was the only place that would meet setbacks. Then that would be a hardship, that you don't. Then that would be a hardship that you don't want to tear this, this tree down. Or you have this weird slope in your yard, so you can't put your shed in your backyard because that, it won't, with meeting the requirements, you can't because your lot physically can't. Uh, you know, those are some of, some examples of what the hardship is. So with that one or with the, um...
That state mandate again.
Yeah, with the, um, storage sheds, same thing for not meeting setbacks, there were, there's absolutely no hardship for that. It was pure economics for them because they wanted more units to get more money, um, just for, from a zoning standpoint. And I'm not saying this is a practical thing to enforce, but this is what's required by our zoning code and by state statute. So that's why you will continuously see me recommending to denial of variances unless there truly is, um, practical difficulties and hardships. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Darn that state. Any other conversation on that item? All right, well, let's move on to E three then. Council member request, Mr. Wrigley.
We got in your packet, something I got from the city of Ramsey, um, talking about their, um, refusing to follow the last mask mandate that we had from the governor towards the end of it, they followed it most of the way through, and then towards the end they got it. I found it when they, I don't know if it was on the Star Tribune or if it was on the local news or what, but anyway, they're talking about mask mandates again. I thought this gives us the opportunity to get out ahead of this. Anytime, uh, they do it over and over and over again, and every time it's going to be harder and harder to, uh, say no. And, um, I agree with most of, most of what they said. Um, I don't think we should say law enforcement in any mandates that we say, um, and they do say it in theirs. Um, President Biden said that, uh, well, he said, he has said a number of things, but...
And does he remember saying?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's an issue for another topic. But anyway, he said that mask mandates were going to come down through local governments, and I thought, well, that's us. And, uh, so I thought we could get out ahead of this, and I know, um, I expect the school board to put masks in the school. I have all kinds of clients telling me that they expect the school to do it, if not day one, probably within the first month of school. And, uh, I would just like to, the chief and I, because I know he doesn't want to be told what to enforce or not enforce, so I was coming up with words. He seemed to like one word I came up with, which was, um, oh, now it's going to escape me. Um, we wouldn't recognize any mask mandates, not that we wouldn't enforce it, we wouldn't recognize it. The other word I came up with that he kind of chuckled at, but I thought it was a good word anyway, was, uh, we could call ourselves a sanctuary city for mask non-wearers. Anyway, I think most of that resolution is something that we can agree with, other than I know nobody wants to tell the, um, the police department what to do, including me. If I'm speaking for you, Chief Biden, am I doing good so far? Yeah, and, uh, because I've talked, I've talked to Chief Myers about it quite a bit, so.
I do got to say that I, I saw a presentation on TV where they were talking to a mask specialist, and he was saying that if you wear the mask, um, he didn't necessarily, I'll tell you how they put it out, and I'll tell you how I read through it, was if you don't wear a mask and we're sitting this close, I could potentially sneeze or cough on you. Now, if I'm wearing a mask, it's going up. So that's why you should wear a mask. But I thought to myself, well, if it's going up, it still has to settle somewhere.
Yeah.
So either way, you're pretty much telling me it doesn't matter if you wear that mask or not, because it's still got to settle somewhere. So this, I maybe is temporarily helping me, I guess, but it's not helping me.
Well, I'm going to be bold enough to say there's just as many, if not more, medical professionals that say, don't wear a mask, because do, you just don't see them on the local news or the, or the, uh, uh, nation news, whatever we call that, evening news, because, um, they have an agenda. And, uh, you know, I think even, even Dr. Fauci went back and forth for a while. He said, no mask, and then he said mask, and I mean, right now, most people are wearing masks, although if you go to Coburns, you notice all their employees have to wear one. And they don't have a mask mandate, they don't have a mask mandate sign out there, but they do say mask requested, not mask mandated. So it looks pretty much like their sign that they had out when they did do the mask mandate. But now, right now, it says requested, and I think they wear more than anybody else. Um, for a while, I was seeing, for about a week, I saw, um, um, QuickTrip, well, I would say a, a third to a fourth of their employees, but now I don't know if they got bored with it or not, but you see very few of their employees wear it. And you will see probably ten percent of the general public wearing it as well. So anyway, um, I like the idea of saying we're not going to recognize it. If there's any other words that people don't like, and is there any words that you guys didn't like in those, in that?
I think recognize is a good word.
We probably aren't going to have to worry about it because the governor has no power to mandate masks. It'd have to go through legislation at this point, and that'll take eighteen months the way they move.
Well, I would disagree with that because Biden himself was checking, he's, he, after he said local government, then he said, well, I'm checking in to see if the federal government can do a mask mandate. So I get it, I know that walls can't do it anymore, I know that.
I think, I think the president himself is speaking out of his keister.
Well, he might be, but I'm telling you, people are, people are, you know, I, I just think we should get out ahead of it, that's my opinion. I, I think it's, I think it's a lot closer than you think. I think you're going to find it in the school system this year, not the beginning of the year, but...
Right, but that, that has nothing to do with the city here as a council. That's a school district, they kind of govern themselves.
Well, you can say that, but all of a sudden, all of a sudden, the county commissioners get together and, well, the schools weren't, and maybe we should mandate everybody wearing in the county. I think, I think, I think it's closer than you think. I think it could be within the next three months.
He could be potentially right, where they'll just follow trend, and you could be potentially right too. I mean, it's, I guess what he's saying is there's no, there's nothing bad in being ahead of, I mean, that's what we've always done as planned in the city anyway, so...
I just think we should leave it up to the individual. If you choose to wear a mask, by all means, wear one.
I would support, I would support anyone that wants to wear a mask. If someone wants to wear the mask...
Neutral thing to do.
No, this is the neutral thing to do. If you don't want to wear a mask, then you don't have to if we've done that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what Councilman Collison's saying.
If we, but if the governor or the county or somebody makes a mandate, then technically we would all have to wear masks, right? So then we've been taken, that, that individual choice has been taken away. With saying that we're not going to recognize a mask mandate, it leaves the individual choice in place.
That's true. Which I'm okay with saying we wouldn't recognize it.
I think we should wait until we, that route we have to cross that river.
I think we might as well get it done now, and then it's, then it's...
I, I...
The reason I wouldn't want to make it, because then we look reactionary. If we get out ahead of this, all of a sudden, we're the leaders, and the important thing about that is, is that, you know, well, we had, you know, county could come up to us and say, well, we had this here first, you can't react to it. I mean, maybe, maybe, I'm not saying they're right or wrong, but I'm guessing people are going to fight it more afterwards, if we come out afterwards, than if we come out before and get ahead of it. So that's why I wanted to talk about it now, because I see it coming, I do. I, you know, I, I hope you're right, I do hope you're right. I don't want, I don't want to fight people with mask, not mask, you know, that type of thing, you know? I, I dealt with it in my office every, every day, you know? People, there's people that did want to come in with a mask, they didn't care what the governor said, they're not coming in with a mask. And then we had people, you know, that, and most of the time we're wearing a mask, but there, we're still dealing with people that are not wearing masks, and so I want to give people that clear choice. And if Coburns wants to say mask required, they're a independent business, I wouldn't fight that. I wouldn't fight anybody that walked in here with a mask, I wouldn't say...
I just won't go to Coburns. Because I'm with you guys, I think it's our choice.
I, I, I totally agree, I think it's our choice, but here's the problem. If the government comes, if the, if the governor comes along and says it's a mask mandate, but if you as a city do not follow that mandate...
We're not recognizing it.
Okay, we don't recognize it, but then by not recognizing it, we're not following it, and they turn around and say, okay, you're losing all your LGA funds. Where are you coming up with that money?
Is that possible? I'd have to look at Ms. Wood or the chief.
The League of Minnesota Cities did put out, um, back in the, near the beginning of the pandemic when this was all being talked about and discussed, that, I don't know specifically on LGA, and perhaps Becker may provide insight on that one, but they did come out and say that any cities that do go against it will not be able to be within the League of Minnesota Cities Trust, which is who our insurance and liability carrier is, so then we'd have to go to the pool, into the market to find our own insurance for things. So it increases, long story short, increases the liability that, and the expense to the residents. So, did you hear anything specific on LGA?
I didn't hear anything on LGA. To my knowledge, to my knowledge, the only way we can lose LGA is if we don't file our annual audit with the state auditor's office in a timely fashion.
So LGA doesn't, you can take that out of your, your mind, Councilman Lundin. However, it worries me about the League of Minnesota is because they have saved us a lot of money in the time all of us have sat up here. So I guess...
Well, I appreciate Councilman Lundin's concern, but walls can't come through, Councilman, um, Collison's right, walls can't come through with another mandate. I mean, you know, but, but the county can, and, and, you know, somebody other than, you know, the federal government can, and I want to be out ahead of them. You know, if, if the state does it, and all of a sudden we have these stipulations, we can always go back and visit it, but I would just as soon be up ahead of this myself, and that's what I'm saying. No, I think, I think it's coming again because you start, I, I see people putting on the mask all the time now. Once, I, I don't get very many in my office, but I do get one or two, and I go, I have a mask sitting on my desk, and I go up to them and say, would you feel more comfortable I put on a mask? And most, everyone's said no so far, you know, but I ask them, they're by the door, and I'm, I'm back by my desk, which is probably twenty-five feet away, and I ask them, and if they want me to put on a mask, I'll put on a mask, you know, it's, I'm not trying to, you know, be difficult about it, but in general, I think it should be left up to the individual business, the individual, uh, family, the individual adults, yeah.
Then I would, yeah, I would word it a little different than I would, we recognize your right to wear a mask or not to wear a mask.
Absolutely, we, I would definitely put that in. I would stick up for anyone's right to wear a mask or not wear a mask.
To me, it seems like they are taking our rights. That's what it seems like to me.
I would, I would strongly recommend the city attorney...
It feels like they're taking our rights.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I would strongly recommend city attorney, given his point of view on making that statement and making it official.
Before it's even made.
I, I'm not against that, but I, I, I'm with Councilman Wrigley, I kind of feel like them telling us what to do is, we have individual rights, and it seems like they're stepping on us left and right.
I bet you I could tell you what the city attorney's going to say.
I bet you I could too.
What's he going to say? I'm curious.
We shouldn't get behind that.
I could already hear it, so I don't really care what he has to say, so...
But I do, but doesn't mean we have to follow it, Councilman.
Sometimes you got to remember the freedom that we're supposed to be here protecting, and the oath that we took to, to preserve the constitution is more important than a little bit of savings on, and you know how much I like to save money, but...
But you, you're right, we all took that oath to support and recognize the constitution.
And I'm going to ask what I asked last time we talked about this. I said, okay, at what point in time does this become constitutional? I feel all the way at that crossroad right now. If they come out with a mask mandate, next thing, you hear people all over the place. You hear it, you hear it on the news, CNN, CBS, all over the news. You know, these people should not be able to grocery store, they should not be able to go to concerts, they're not should be able to go to this, not go to that, if they don't take the, the, um, vaccines. So we let them run over with the mask, and they're going to run over with the vaccine, and I think we need to stand up for our rights because if you don't agree that the mask is not constitutional, constitutionally right or not, you certainly have to agree that the...
When is it going to stop?
You certainly have to agree with something being put in your body against your will, like that vaccine.
You know, our kids have been having required to take certain vaccines longer before I was born.
But there's always exemptions. I, 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 the ones I didn't agree with, I, I'm not saying my kids never got vaccinated, but I can pick and choose, I'm against this one, be, you know, I don't care if it was religious or medical or whatever, there's still forms you can fill out that say...
And Councilman Gordon and I, having the youngest children here, could definitely attest to, we do have the pick and choose. We have that right.
Yeah. I mean, imagine, imagine if they told you you had to wear a green hat every day. How would you feel about that? That, that's no different.
Tell, what if they had to say you had to wear pink underwear?
Yeah.
You do the Randy Moss, right?
I'm just saying, it's, what, what if it's, you know, when is it going to stop, would be my question, so. I guess a, a little more homework and being out ahead of it is...
Well, I don't know, where do we go from here? Do we, why not?
We could ask the city attorney, most definitely, I think that should be done. Um, not saying we need to agree with what he says, but at least checking with him would be a, a positive thing.
Probably on an issue like this, Mayor Council, I think it'd probably be best to have him available for you all to ask your questions, because I know that there, this has been brought up before with the constitution, things like that, something that is not my forte, I think it'd be better to have him available for you all to ask your questions too.
Well, I, I think we should most definitely have him at the next Cal meeting then.
Well, I want to say this as well, we have, we bring in different attorneys other than our city attorney to deal with dish, with different issues. There are such a thing as constitutional attorneys, and I'm not saying, I like our city attorney, I think he does a great job, and he saves us a lot of money by not showing up every time, but, and, and, and he's, I believe he's definitely concerned about the city. I just, you know...
You wouldn't say it was his forte either?
I would, I would say that he's not, I don't know if he's necessarily a constitutional lawyer. There is something, you know, you know, you'll see him specialize in, in auto and work comp and, and criminal and, and...
Labor.
Labor, you know, so there are constitutional lawyers out there that, you know...
It, it, and I, I'm with Councilman Wrigley, if a constitutional lawyer could sit in front of me and tell me that it's not against our constitutional rights, then, then it is what it is. But if he said it is, then, I'm with Councilman Wrigley. I've, well, I'm, I'm saying if, if he's supporting what you're saying and saying, yeah, they're violating our constitutional rights, then I, I would stand strongly next to you. But if they say it, it isn't violating our constitutional rights, then I guess we all shut up.
Mayor Council, it's very possible that you may find a constitutional attorney that you could find both sides of that spectrum, depending on who you're asking. But I am all for it, if that direction is to find a different attorney to bring in as a, so as a specialist, I can definitely look into that.
Fifteen minute conversation on the phone with our city attorney first, it won't hurt.
I say we see what he says first.
I wouldn't argue with that.
And then if it feels like we need to go further, then so be it, but let's see what he says first.
In fact, I'd like to ask him that question, do you think we need to deal with a constitutional attorney on this?
So bringing him at the next Cal meeting, sounds like a great idea to me.
Is it okay to wait till that September date then?
You okay with that, Councilman Wrigley, Councilman Gordon?
That would be September twenty-first.
I'm okay with it right now, so...
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to get out ahead of this. If we are, if we're all wearing, well, I apologize, so... I think, I think Councilman Gordon looks good in a mask anyway, so...
And what city was this? You said it was Ramsey?
Ramsey.
Yeah, so I mean, they had the guts to do it, so they must have done their research, maybe, maybe a phone call to them.
I can reach, reach out to the Ramsey mayor. I do pretty good talking to the mayors, amazingly. And I'm not afraid to ask.
Takes a special kind of person to be a mayor.
I don't know if that's a positive or a negative, Councilman Gordon.
Depends on the day.
Fair enough.
Mayor and Council, just to be fair on both sides, stay neutral myself, it does look like the mayor and two council members voted against this resolution, and four council members voted for it, so perhaps you may want to reach out to more than one person to get both sides of the spectrum.
Yeah, I realize it was quarter three, I remember reading-
Well, just saying, if he's said he's gonna reach out to the mayor, just know that the mayor's on one side.
Yeah, I can reach out to the mayor, and then one of the council members for it, and see what they say.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right, let's move on to E4. That is our garden discussion, we do have the two individuals. What? Oh, yeah. Well, we can still pull them up and get the feel for it here. Obviously, Councilman Collison had to use the restroom, I'm assuming. But we can bring Leroy Johnson and Ms. Elaine Fisher to the podium. In front of you, we gave you a beacon copy with one ninety-three by, I think you remeasured this here, Mr. Johnson, and it was different, was it not?
And we'll have them state their address for the record, please.
State your name and address for the record.
Is there my card?
Turn on your mic there. Perfect.
Here we go. Are we on?
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Leroy Johnson.
I'm Elaine Fisher, and I live at five oh eight Main Street West.
And I live at five ten Main Street West. And so, to, I want to be, address the members of the committee as a whole, also, I'd like to recognize our finance officer-
Finance director, Mr. Becker.
And I'd like to recognize as well our public service director, Matt, who we've worked with very closely with in regards to this proposal, along with, of course, Mayor Johnson, who's been, uh, because several, several discussions regarding this matter. And so, I think, I'd like to give you just a brief inter, introduction of the people that are entering into this proposal, which is Elaine and I, just to give you a little background, that both Elaine and I come from heritage as the good old town of Tracy, Minnesota, which is a small ag town in southwestern Minnesota. Both of us have farm backgrounds. Elaine has a degree in hor, in the horticulture, I have a degree in ag education, and so we have both, our entire lives, we're pretty much connected with agriculture. And so, and as a result of that, we take a lot of pride in our property that we presently own and live in. To give you an identification of where that is, we are the first twin home west of Madison Park, as you cross over the culvert, Eddie Coors whiskey row.
That's, these two addresses for the council.
So if you wanna look at it on the, on the, uh-
Councilman to the left of me, it's these two addresses.
Here, this was actually prepared by, by Mayor Johnson, and it's a reprint of the, of the plat, and so you can see on Main Street, which we're getting a brand new street process of, which are all, we are the first twin home, as you, that you come to. So, what we're proposing to do, we would like to enter into a long-term, twenty-year lease for a parcel of Madison Park. And if you look at your diagram and locate, and they're drawn in, there's a parcel there that is sixty feet by ninety feet. This parcel, this, uh, bust up against our north ends of our lots, both Elaine and I. This particular parcel is not used by the public, I have never seen anyone in that particular corner of Madison Park. As a result of it, in all due respect, this particular parcel is, well, we had some mold infestation problem here, which is Matt just got on immediately, and we're trying to correct that, we, we followed the, we followed up to try and do it on our lots as well. We don't know if we're, if we're getting ahead of it or, or not, but then, there's other, there's broadleaf weeds, and there's crabgrass, and there's quackgrass, and various things in that particular corner of Madison Park. And there again, for the reason being, in all due respect to our public director, uh, service director, is that it's just not utilized very much by the public, so it just kind of remains in that state. And also, the soil structure in that parcel is sand, as is a good part of our sandy is. So it is not very conducive for good plant growth, or grass growth, or anything there, it's this kind of, it's very mal, very under-nourished type material, right ground, it's a, it just, nothing really wants to grow there. And so, what we would want to do is enter into this twenty-year lease program, drawn up by the city attorney, at a fee to be charged to us at the rate of one dollar per year for this twenty-year, twenty-year period. We would then be responsible for the maintenance of this parcel, of which I kinda almost, we do almost now. I have, fortunate enough to have lawn equipment that is quite, quite large, I'm able to take care of not only our properties, but I think I can take care of that as well. In fact, I have taken the liberty, just to make it easier for anybody who wants to view, I have mowed, uh, and mowed that little section of sixty by ninety, of this is what we're talking about. Uh, it's not a problem for me, because my mowers are such a size that I can do it in just a matter of a few minutes, so I would be able to maintain that. However, if this lease, if this lease agreement would go through, then I would ask that we had a, that an easement be granted on the easterly side of Elaine's lot, so that we could bring in black dirt, bring in compost, and bring in any other things that we would need to, to manage that, that, that small parcel.
You're essentially what you want to do here, Mr. Johnson, is you want to do like a flower garden.
Mainly, that's what it would be. We would do it in sections, we, the size of it, to put it in perspective, it is a point one-two-eight acres. The way you determine that, you take the square footage, and the ninety-three by sixty is what the parcel that, that we're, we're using, get your square footage, divide it by forty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty square feet in an acre, that's gonna give you a size of a point one-two acres, that's what this little sixty by ninety-three, uh, tract of land consists of. That, in a sense, if you want to put it in easier perspective, is actually two-thirds the width of this building, and from this end to the, to the front door, this would describe roughly ninety-three by sixty feet. That is, that is that parcel that we're talking about, trying to-
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, where did you say you would request an easement? What property? Where?
On Madison Park.
You mentioned-
On Madison Park.
Be on Madison Park? You mentioned a, a person, but I don't know that, who the, where she lives, but-
Elaine Fisher is the young lady standing next to him.
You're the one going right off Main Street there?
Right, so, all, all he's asking for is what is-
No, I'm, it's fine, I just was curious.
Is just access.
Also, then, if this lease were, were to take place, we would like to bring in a, a storage shed for the purpose of housing, mowers, tillers, hoses, lawn equipment, anything that you possibly would need to maintain this parcel, but this would be of a portable nature, it would be not just a shed, it would be color-coordinated, it would complement our homes, our twin home, and it would be able with structure, either I would, we would either erect it, or we would purchase it and have it delivered in, whichever. That's an option, that we may or may not do, but I want to have it, in the event that this lease is acceptable, then I would like to have it so that we could do that, in the event that we do need that storage shed, whether it be this fall, whether it be next year, or whenever, I'm not sure, but I want to make that a bill. So, after, while, while we would utilize it, I have, we have the ability to maintain it, to win its present state. I can mow it, we do nothing more than mow it and maintain the weeds. Elaine is deaf on weeds, she can't stand weeds at all, and she's constantly, we ever watch her, when she's walking around, she's always looking down for weeds. Her lawn, and mine, is a lot of it is done because Elaine watches it more closely, she doesn't, you will never find crabgrass in her yard, you won't find quackgrass in her yard, you won't find any broadleaf weed in her yard. We dig high in our property. This year, unfortunately, our lawn looks like everyone else is young because of the drought, it's not as lush as it does normally in Madison. We look out our northwind, we, to the north, and what we see is this parcel of Madison Park that is, uh, could be improved, but that-
Well, I'm sold, is there any reason they can't do this, or would we check with the city attorney, or?
Did, we covered every base we needed to cover.
So, first I'll say, I was not provided all the information, because I never had met with Mr. Johnson or Ms. Fisher here on this, but, so I did ask some questions to the city attorney on this, and we do have a few things that just need to be discussed before we get into the nitty-gritty of leasing potentially, so, the first thing, we would have to do some intense, extensive research into how do we obtain those park lands? So did we purchase it with park dedication fees? Did the city outright buy it? Was it deeded to the city? Was it deeded in a, in a city through a plat? Depending on how we received those funds, because they became park funds, it's not just a city property that we can turn around and sell, be a little bit easier if they wanted, if they live right next to like the lot downtown, or this way or something, than park dedication funds. So we'd first, and foremost, before we could actually make a decision, find out how we got those.
Can I, can I add to you on that? I, if I'm not mistaken, that land was given to us by Mattson's, when they built, when they built, they originally built those, uh-
Twin homes.
The, the-
Dave Clark.
Dave Clark built those twin homes, but Mattson Park was all brought in from Glenn Mattson, and that was nineteen-
Is that part of the plat?
Nineteen seventy, nineteen, late seventies, early seventies, or late sixties. I, I was a little kid, I was swimming in that creek, so I, and that was Mattson Park back then. So, that would have to go back fifty, fifty years plus. So-
Before Jimmy's Pizza.
And, and I'm getting where you're going at with that, um, with the park dedicated funds. I also believe when Dave Clark built, started those townhouses, I think that property was, he gave that to extend on the Mattson Park. And that goes back late eighties.
Well, our, yes, you're right, our, our twin home was the first ones built in that complex, that small complex, called the Clark, we called the Clark Edition. That, and ours was built in two thousand and two. That, that, that was the first ones, and then from there on, the others were built in the remainder of that Clark Edition. You see, when he, you're right on this, Steve, he acquired that land from Mattson, and he used that, a lot of the soil to, to, to maintain his elevation for the twin homes, the way they're built. As a result of that, you'll notice some depression in Madison Park, and not over on the east side of the creek, but on-
The west side.
The side of the creek. And he's taken fill out of there to maintain the grade for the twin homes that were built. When he completed that project, then, that now became, he dedicated that back. That is now Mattson Park, it is a city park, it's maintained by the city, and it's not to be sold, and we're not, not attempting to buy it, because I know it cannot be sold.
But I think, I think Ms. Wood needs to, to, just to find that, to verify that, before we can really-
And I have a couple other points that the ma, that the attorney brought up as well. So if leased, I mean, we would have to collect rent, which you are more than willing to do, you said a dollar per year, I believe you said, or it would constitute a gift, which a gift would not be permitted for the city to do for somebody. While the taxes probably are not high, if, once the property was leased out, it would have to become taxable property, so likely we would have to have a survey to get exactly those points, and that would have to be relayed over to the county, because it would be taxable property, now that the city, a non-tax entity doesn't, isn't in the hands of it, right? Because we leased it out. So that's something, and that would be a cost, and we can further look into that, should this want to be pursued, and we could talk to Mr. Cook and find out what the cost of survey that would be. The mayor, or the attorney did bring up, well, if you are thinking about leasing this, because you no longer want this property as park property, perhaps the best method, if you're able to do so, depending on how you obtain that land, and the means of which, which it was given to the, to the, to the public here, is, it might be best to just vacate it, so no longer the city would own it as parkland. Now, if it is vacated, there's a process that has to go in place, I believe that there might have to be a public hearing, depending on different variables, but again, on how it was received by the city, again, we'd have to do that research, if we vacated the property, it would go back to the original owner, if they wanted it, so there's a process, a legal process involved with that. And then lastly, of his concern, let's just, he said, if you want to go through these steps, whether you wanted to vacate it or move forward with the lease, which we would have to address potential issues with a shed or a storage unit on a leased property, that could potentially be something further for discussion. It does set a bad precedence, because if we have property that looks like it's not being used in other parkland, are we going to leave that as an option across all of our parks? So, I know you have an extensive background, and you have the means, perhaps, maybe more so than other people who may want to buy the land, but again, being fair to everyone, if we have other land, that is in people's backyards that is technically parkland, are we going to give them the same opportunities as we'd be giving this property owner?
The only thing I need to ask also is, Mr. Sylvester, do you see any issues with this?
I would say, Mayor and Council, I would say that in the area of the park, this is probably one area that's not utilized very good where it's at, as far as being parked, I don't see public generally in that area doing anything, most, everybody's on the other side of Madison Park, or maybe traveling from, you know, using that part of Madison Park, maybe to walk to Mobile or something maybe, but I don't see people over there very often, and this is kind of a corner of their backyard, meeting up there, I mean, I-
I ju, generally, I think everything on the west side of that creek really isn't used for anything.
Yeah, you are correct.
Yeah.
I think what we should do is just have them volunteer, I mean, you don't care that you have sole access to the property necessarily, you're not gonna put a fence up or anything, right? I mean, if somebody from the public came over that way and meandered through and took a look, that you wouldn't really mind, so why not just have them, you know, maybe we can create a, some kind of a group, or I don't know if we have to do that even, but maybe they just want to be a volunteer, you know, public works employees or something like that, and maybe that's just their, their role is to, you know, handle that corner of the park, you know? So, then there is no lease, there's no, none of that other stuff that we have to worry about, and they can, you know, manage it as they see fit on our behalf.
Just insurance, wouldn't be the only question.
That'd be the only thing involved in insurance, because it is city property. If they leased it, then something happened to them on that property, the city wouldn't be liable, and I'm not saying that they would do anything to the city, but we have to look out to the city as a whole.
On that, I guess, I don't know if that would be a whole different, different if they were just swinging on the swing set at Mattson, I mean, there is a liability that we're taking on the risk. For me, it would be more, are we going to let everyone, or who, because we want to be fair to everyone who has an area buy, maybe someone who wants to make a flower garden in, in a Mattson Park as well, but they don't live there, but they want it in your backyard, is that okay? Would we let them go put that there?
I mean, we have community gardens in our other parks.
We have a community garden, we have a designated spot for that.
Mm-hmm. Can we just make that a community garden, and maybe they're, they got the first crack at the, at, because they, people lease those plots, right?
The community garden is rented, as far as seasonal rental.
Yeah, right, right, seasonal, right.
So we could rent this to them. I gu, I guess the presidents, I, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Wood, as far as the presidents goes, but this is, it's not like the community garden where we're seeing people coming and going, because I see it all day, every day in the community garden. In their backyard, I don't see anybody. The only time I have seen anybody is during the parade. I think there was people parking there.
Yeah, they do, they, during the, during the-
But not in your corner.
They're along the ditch, along the creek, I call it, they park there during the parade.
But they're not in your corner, they don't even come close to those houses.
They're, they're, they're on the other side of it, they're on, right up next to the ditch is where they park, they come in off of, knowing where we fly.
And, and I, and I guess my question would be is if, if somebody did it the right way, like these two are doing, I think we should visit it as a case by case. So if somebody else wanted to, let's see, the next two homes came to us and wanted to do it, they did it the right way, who knows? Maybe this council would say, "Yeah, why not? We let him do it, let's let them do it."
Well, my next question, is there anybody else? Is that, that's the non-association, correct?
Yes.
Is there anybody else interested in your neighborhood, helping you with this possible project?
I think I know, we know all of the property owners that are on the Mattson Park.
On the Brookview side.
Running the Mattson Park, I think I know of no one that, that I don't think is gonna want to take anything, anything more additional than the present they have. Some of them-
I mean, just-
Number one, they don't have the-
You're, you're saying on the east side of Brookview.
I'm just, this ninety-three by sixty lot, is there anybody else interested? Is there anybody else interested in your neighborhood that's going to help you with this ninety-three by sixty lot?
Will they help me with it?
No, it'd be, it'd be these two, just them two.
We don't need any, I don't require any help. We have, I have enough equipment. I used to live...
Right, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I understand that.
We had, we had a neighbor who was out here in Athens Township. And when I moved into town, I, I made a, a larger out there. I was maintaining five acres of my lawn.
That's a beautiful farm you had out there.
I've got equipment and I got a mower there that I used on that five acres. And it takes me to mow our lawn maybe twenty minutes, you see, because I got a five-foot head on it.
Maybe ten.
And so, I can very easily maintain this, this ninety-three.
Yeah, what... I understand that. What I was referring to is, what if your neighbors want to do the same thing?
The next townhouse over or the one directly...
I'm, I'm, what I'm referring to is a development community garden is the idea I'm coming up with. So, then it is fair.
I, I couldn't speak for the, for any, for the others, but I don't...
The question is, would you...
Would you be open to that idea?
Adjacent properties, I know no one there that I would...
Would you, would you be opposed to the next one that's off of Brookview Court? The people that butt up to that, them come out and enjoy that flower garden area? Are you, I mean, that's, I guess that's be the question.
Absolutely not.
They're actually willing to let the community enjoy it.
And I, and I get that, I just, I, I think that's where Dan was going.
Yeah. Are you willing to let other people plant in there?
It's, it's still a city park in a sense, where we're, we're using it, there's no pilot transfer. We're not trying to purchase it, we're not trying to, it's, it's still strictly just a, a city-owned park.
So, they, they would maintain it, they would plan in it. They don't want anybody else's hands in there, but anybody could visit it.
Well, see, that's what I'm referring to then, that this is exactly what she was bringing up. If it's not open to everybody or have a chance, then maybe I want to use the utility easement in my backyard to do something. Or some on the borders.
And that's what I'm saying, a case by case.
I, I personally don't have any problem with this, but I think we need to do our due diligence with checking on how it was dedicated. If, if, if Dave Clark had given it to the city and it wasn't dedicated park money. I, I think we need to do our due diligence on that. And I think we'd have to come back and, and...
I think definitely, I, again, I, I haven't dug much into this, um, but I'm trying to think of like the other programs and things that we have in place to help people beautify our city and to help take care of our park systems. We have an adopt a park program that is never utilized, I think since I implemented it in twenty fourteen or something. Um, and maybe that's something, if they adopt the whole Mattson Park to help beautify it and make that better for everyone to enjoy, that's really hard to argue with. We still became, be, are still as the sole owner of it, so we don't have any of the legal issues of the renting, the leasing, the who's in control of it, therefore changes in the taxes, things like that. And perhaps the flowers are things that you put in there. Um, maybe it's a trail, I'm not sure what you're doing, that's quite a bit of land, so maybe it's a trail through there and certain flowers or perennials that are going to just keep flourishing. It's donated to the city, therefore it is enjoyed by everyone and it's well-known. It's not the secluded thing that, well, yeah, it's for everyone, but nobody knows it exists or anything like that. It's more of a, here's a walkway and here's, here's a sign that says what this is. Maybe it's a pollinator garden, or I don't even know. But may, I'm just throwing some ideas out there of perhaps not having to dive into this whole legal thing of leasing it or, or whatever, that changes a lot of that and can be tricky for if other people want to do that just in their backyard of budding up to a storm pond or a park or something. It's more of the beneficial of all.
I think, I think Ms. Wood is, is on the right page and I think she needs to get a little bit of time to, to get this all done. And I, and I, I think majority of us up here feel it's not a bad idea, we just need how to do it. Learn, know how to do it without opening up another can of worms that we don't want to have to fight. And I think Ms. Wood is very good at coming up with those alternatives to make this work.
There's a lot of property owners that have lots backing up the park land, didn't I say any, so...
But I get, I, I believe Mr. Johnson, I think he's, I think he's got a pretty good portion that most of those people aren't going to want to do anymore. You're working there already, God.
Right.
So, I was going to say, you guys can come to my house, five oh eight Marion, you can, you can have a community garden right there. There's lots of weeds, so you would have hours of entertainment.
I'm not saying that, you and I are trying to take on more work either, but it, it's the fact that we take pride in our property as a present ability. And when we look at it, in all due respect to, and I'm throwing mad under the bus.
It's just not a priority.
That when we look out our windows and we see, she was out today, there's crabgrass along there and the drives are nuts. And she was pulling by crabgrass and, and we're, actually, I think we're over the line just a little bit already, because there's crabgrass there alongside the, the lot line. And so, all we're trying to do is beautify it, that's really all we're trying to do. And, and in the process, we're going to take that parcel, point one acres and, and then develop it into a flower garden immediately. It's going to have to be done, it's, it's, you know, it's a first high school coming around. So, you, we're going to do it in parcels. But as we do it in parcels, we'll maintain the rest of it, because I've got the capability to maintain it. I've got the equipment to do it. And so, in the meantime, we'll manage the weed, the weed control. We'll manage the, the mowing and things of that nature. So, as we develop this, then we'll still maintain the entire sixty by ninety-three feet. And where you establish that is that you mark, mark that off, of, of the three permanent lot pins that are on the east side of it, the west side of it, and on the, uh, and her one lot pin. There's three permanently marked lot pins that designate that. That's where we got our measurement, we taped it off of that, off of these lot pins that are permanent markers in these lot lines. So, you get sixty by ninety-three, that's, that's what you did, that's, that's what you're seeing on this diagram.
And the west side of that property there is all trees or bushes.
Yeah, that's what, it's the, that's up against the neighbor's west there.
I do have a question, another question though. So, if it, if it ends up being potentially a property that we can vacate because we're able to because of how we got it, but also because we don't use it, we don't feel that potentially, if council decides that they don't feel the need to keep that piece of land, are you interested in purchasing it? Or are you only interested in leasing?
We're only interested in leasing, I know that, I know that. I don't, because I don't think, I personally think when you do research this, I think they're going to find it cannot be sold. I think it's set up as a perpetual, an ongoing, I, I don't think, the way they...
But you're not interested in purchasing it though?
I'm pretty sure it cannot be sold.
Okay.
If Dave Clark dedicated that back, that it was of a permanent nature, I don't believe that you've got...
The, the other question I have is, we've had this too. So, we have had other inquiries in the past years of people wanting to put things out in the park. Um, the one that easily comes to most to my mind are the bluebird houses. And we had had a gentleman come in here, um, spoke to council and wanted to, or well, spoke to committee and then wanted to put bluebird house, ultimately had to get approved by council. And the biggest concern of that time was, well, what happens when you're done taking care of them? Then who takes care of them? Because to have bluebirds come, there's all these rules and who knew? But he did a great job of educating us, because he was very skilled and knowledgeable and expert in that, in that realm. Um, and this may be the same too, I'll ask. I mean, what if, I know you say twenty years, but what if you are done with it in five? Then does it become the city's responsibility to mow it down or upkeep it? Or what do you envision if you decide not to go twenty years and take care of it?
That was my last statement here, I'm going to go to Dave Clark.
Okay.
In the event that the agreement is terminated by Johnson Fisher, maybe for whatever reason, incapacitated because of health and the, of injury, he no longer can do it, he just can't, he can't do it anymore. This would terminate the lease, the portable shed would have to, it's a portable nature, it would have to be moved off. And then any improvements that have been done on the property would revert back to the city, because it is part of Mattson Park. So, that's what would happen to it, I'll say.
By donation? Then you would donate what was there to the city is what you're saying?
Yeah, it would revert back to the city.
And I think it would be a beautiful wildflower garden.
Because you see...
I get a lot of compliments on people in Mattson Park now and walking by saying, who just love your flowers.
I'd love you to do some things downtown too, and we're throwing out ideas of downtown education, just saying. I need you to get it out.
Right now, with the destroyed soil structure there, it, it wouldn't be any good to try to plant anything. Flowers wouldn't grow. So, we're going to have to bring in black dirt, we have to bring in compost, we have to bring in peat moss and various things like that to get a seed bed.
That's why you're, that's why you're requesting access to the east of you, so you can bring that in.
Not to go to be driving on the thing every day, probably wouldn't get driven on it, but once every six months, you know? But we need an access to get in to that protected parcel.
Say, Matt, do we have any compost over at the site?
There is, Mayor and Council, there's no compost over there right now. Hopefully this fall, we can screen some, there's nothing there right now.
So, I, I think, I think I go back to, I think we need to give Ms. Wood some time to, to come up with how we can create a creativity on this. I liked her idea about the park dedicated.
Adopt a park.
Adopt a park, I like that.
Maybe less legal stuff to...
I think I like that idea, I think that might be a good way to do it. We'll just have to figure out how we can do it to a certain size or something. And, um, maybe with that easement like he's talking about, maybe we can make it a walking path so that people can walk back there to see it. I don't, I mean, it's just ideas. I think that, I think she needs to do her diligence and figure out how we can make this work. For right now, I don't, I think most of us up here, like I said, I, I can't speak for everybody, but I, myself, I think it's not a bad idea. I just, we just need to figure out how we can do it right.
Just need to make sure all of our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, so, uh, from what I'm understanding is they're not saying no. So, just let us, let Ms. Wood do her due diligence, see what we can come up with and...
You did a very good job researching, very impressive.
We'll keep you in the loop, for sure.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, we, I remember we discussed this, it was probably over a year ago.
No, I just think you did a good job and should be well accommodated or very, very well complimented for that, so...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, you too. We'll move on to E five, the Main Street discussion, Mr. Cook. Hello, wake up, sir.
Yes, hello, Mr. Mayor, Mayor's Council. Uh, so, as we were talking, uh, we're under construction right now with Main Street. Um, the original plan was to leave the curb and walk on that westernmost block in that had been installed in, um, approximately twelve years ago, I guess I don't know the exact year.
I think it was two thousand and nine. And you speaking the, the piece that's between Rosewood and Whiskey? If you know what I'm talking about, you guys.
Just west of his house.
So, it's kind of like northwest, it's on the other side of the street and west of my house.
In front of the tall apartment or townhouses.
Townhouse, yeah, there's a townhouse in the corner and then another house next to it, so it's that piece of sidewalk.
So, so that's been in, for only twelve years, so we didn't include that in our plan or, you know, feasibility reports. Everything, we've been excluding that, because it's not near, you know, the usual life expectancy of that type of improvement. Um, looking at it though, while we're doing our removals, um, the edge of the walk is pretty ground up, mostly from plows over the, the twelve years. And, uh, you know, it's just a question of, is now the time to remove it so that the entire street is repaired uniformly for the entire run or to just continue with leaving it in place?
Which, which granted, I'm sure it would cost less now than it would cost in the future, before we even hear that price. I'm pretty sure it would cost more if we left it and said, let's do it whenever.
It'd be more than double, I'm sure.
Okay, what's that?
Plus, why would you be bringing it up if you don't think it needs it? Are you, are you recommending we replace it?
So, it's, it's right on the line. It's definitely a ground edge. Uh, my concern with it right now is just whether or not it's going to degrade, you know, earlier than the rest of it, because it's got that kind of exposed surface now, uh, where we may have to repair it earlier than the rest of the street. Um, essentially, the goal would be that it doesn't have to get done until the next time we're coming to the street in thirty years. Um, and so, it's just a question of, is this something we want to leave in? Um, I was talking to Matt on the plow process, uh, how we handle that plowing with the walk right up against the back of curb? And whether or not it's just going to happen to the rest of the walk, you know, over the next five years or so anyway, where it's going to look like that anyway? Um, and I guess Matt can talk on that point, but, um, it's just, now would be the time to do it if we wanted to, so that the costs aren't any increased, you know, separate trip out, separate work order, separate anything. But it's, you know, it's in a questionable, you know, right on the line of whether or not it's worth doing. That's why it was left out before, but now when it's in the summer here, another year of, you know, weathering, it's, it's questionable. And so, right now, based on the unit prices, um, we would just be able to overrun on our quantities. It would cost about seventeen grand to rip all of the blocks worth of sidewalk and curb. You know, that, the bids, I guess, you know, if you reflect back to, uh, the engineer's estimate versus how our bids came in, they were about sixty grand under what, you know, we had budgeted for essentially. Um, and so, this would be, let's just say, using some of the money that's still under the budget. But, you know, a portion of that would end up being assessable back through, um, to the residents, the twenty-five percent topic. But again, right now, the assessments are, you know, not estimated to be five hundred dollars less than the original, um...
So, how much, how much more of that five hundred are you taking away if we were to replace this too?
Um, it does turn out, it looks like there's twenty-nine homes and they are, you know, by the frontage. And so, it's not a perfectly uniform number, but the average would be something in that hundred and seventy dollars range.
It's to be seventeen dollars here.
So, that'd still be three hundred and thirty dollars less than...
The ballpark where we're sitting right now compared to what the original, uh, you know, improvement hearing was, where we talked about assessments with the residents. Um, but otherwise, if anyone here from Matt on the plumbing process and how it may look...
So, yeah, Mayor and Council, so public works process and plowing is to run with the sidewalk that meets the curb line, is to run the wing down that sidewalk or in plowing. You're going to get gouges in that sidewalk just because you get six, eight inches of snow, you're trying to find that curb, trying to stay on that curb while you're trying to clean that snow off that sidewalk. And a lot of this is on the streets are a lot wider, have a lot more snow, which is the other reason why we try to push that sidewalk off with the wing blade, it's just easier. And it's one of the high-traffic areas where the guys, what I'm always getting to right away, so it just, it just helps the process of getting that sidewalk opened up.
There's nobody shunning you, Matt, you feeling a little self-conscious here? Why are you putting your two cents in there?
Cambridge used to do that till we found out it was too hard on the sidewalk. Where the sidewalk meets the curb, because particularly is where the wing.
Yeah, and the, and the sidewalk meets the curb on Main Street.
So, we had to get away from doing that.
That's been our prac, that's our, that's been our practice for years and we do it not just Main Street, the eleventh avenue. We do it on rural road, on the bike path, on rural road, you know, that's been our practice, we've always done it that way.
No, Mike left the room and I was going to ask him a question.
I don't know, I'll, I'll put my two cents in while we're at this. I, I, that whole street being done and you leave that, how many feet is it, Jason?
Well, I mean, it technically is a block, because it is going from Whiskey to...
Yes, that's quite a full block, but it's close.
It's close enough.
But it's close up to a block. Here we put a whole new street in, curb and gutter all the way, and leave out one block of sidewalk?
I, no, I'm going to put my two cents, because I live on Main Street and I'm getting assessed for this, as well as Ms. Fisher and Mr. Johnson. I say do it. And the reason I say do it is because why would we leave a block that's borderline horrible? And our whole Main Street's going to look beautiful, it's going to be brand-new, our sidewalks are going to be new, the curbs are going to new, but this one little piece.
You know, you're, you're, you're taking, you're taking effect that, I'm just throwing numbers, so this, this isn't numbers, but say it's twenty thousand dollars to do it now.
It's going to cost us forty-five.
It's going to cost us forty thousand dollars in three years. And then all of a sudden, you got a nice new sidewalk and now you got something that's three, four years old, five years.
Unless it waits until everything gets done at the same time, if it can hold up thirty years from now.
Yeah, and it, and it won't.
But he's saying it's not.
It won't hold up.
Well, he's not sure if it will.
I don't think it will.
If you've seen it, I would encourage you to go look at it, it ain't, it ain't going to hold out.
Matt's saying he's not sure, so, or not Matt, I'm sorry, Jason.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there will probably be at least spot repairs that are going to be needed.
Within probably five years, you think, or...
Well, at least, yeah, I mean, they're not...
Because I, I think you're going to be there sooner personally, because my kids go up and down that sidewalk and...
They're just really hard on it?
And they're... And they're, well, not only the kids, but the plows that I see come down Main Street, and.
Clearly, clearly the plows.
Yeah, well, which is, it is what it is, I mean, I'm not gonna change what the plows have been doing for eons, it's, you gotta do what you gotta do. Nobody ever complains about how well Main Street's plowed, or sanded, or salted, or et cetera. Uh, I, I don't know, I, as a resident on Main Street, you're, well, I guess I only get three hundred and seventy-three dollars in savings versus my five hundred. I'm not gonna cry over spilt milk. I think if, if it has to be done, it has to be done, and I got two other residents in the room right here on Main Street that. They're both nodding their heads yes too, so I mean, it, it's a, it's less than, it's a little bit less than a block that we're leaving horrible sidewalk. And, and it's borderline horrible, I can say. I, I think we did that one to ten number, Jason, what would you say that would be rated?
That walk?
Yeah.
No, probably like a six, you know, it would be.
So we're at the halfway point of its life expectancy.
And it's strictly that three-inch, you know, edge along the back of curb, but you know, the classic, you can't just replace.
And they're, they're doing it now, so why not just have them replace this?
Yeah, how much more would it cost if we have to just do that, you know, I mean, it's hard to say, I'm sure, but.
Well, um, right, so, so right now, you know, the total project cost is, you know, under our unit prices, it's just that easy to add. It'd be somewhere in that seventeen to eighteen thousand, it would very likely to double that, to have somebody come in separately, saw cutting out those exact limits in terms of you. Spot repairs or the full repair.
In five years, so to speak.
Sure, so, um.
So do we wanna pay more money later, or just work it in this now?
The curb is getting replaced though, right?
No.
No.
No, not, not.
That wasn't in there either?
No.
This walk, cause it, it's specifically.
Specifically, curb and sidewalk.
Correct, off. And there's some of the sidewalk pieces, the panels, that are cracked right now.
Right, and so we are already planning on patching those ones, and so, you know, it would also even have that patch look as it is. The other thing to add on is we are going to that surmountable curb, that rollover, you know, smoother type curb.
And that would be the only area different.
And this one block would have the, kind of the straighter B look, and it would just transition, so.
Just do it. Ms. Wood, you had something to say?
I was gonna add in, in talking with, uh, Mr. Becker about the finances for this, for the city's portion, that we do have enough funds, because he did account for more than what the project came in at, so there are, there is funds available.
That's what my question was gonna be, so you're, you're answering exactly what I was gonna ask, so, it don't matter that he left the room, cause Josie knew the answer. High five, Josie, air five.
And I, and I think, uh, Jason, you said that they're gonna do some tearing up some other stuff tomorrow, so it's kinda imperative that we need to do this, make a decision now?
Yeah, I, I don't mean to force that on you so quickly, but yes, tomorrow was their day of final removals, where we wouldn't have to pay any extra mows, any extra anything to have them come do it, as just part of their process tomorrow. Uh, they're planning on pouring the curb on Thursday, and so, really, timeline-wise, it's.
Not do or die right now.
Should we get moved out to council then?
I'm okay with.
We'd probably have to move that to motion in council as well, correct?
Or can we make that determination now?
It's possible, and I can look into it real quick when we're done here, it's possible that we have a double thing contentiousies that we maybe don't even have to, with just the half the direction.
I mean, if the direction right now, I, like I said, I'm a resident of Main Street, my two neighbors ain't arguing with me, so I say do it. I do have conflict of interest, but it's my money being assessed as a taxpayer, so.
I, I.
And they're gonna take more money out of me, but I say do it, but that's.
I, I say go ahead and do it. Dan?
Yeah.
So I, you got a consensus, Ms. Wood, I think we all.
I think, yeah, Mayor Council, I, I think that if we didn't have the full consensus, I would put to a vote this evening, just to be clear, but if we have the full consensus, I think that we're with it.
Get her done, Mr. Cook.
All right, sounds good.
Anything else I'm missing, Ms. Wood?
Um, I would like to provide the committee with a couple of updates, um, one is on the Main Street project, and I know that you have been notified as well, if you do live there in the area, but because you are doing the concrete work and everything, that homeowners won't be able. To drive up their driveways and access homes as usual, so I just want to let you know that that work is starting, as he, Mr. Hook mentioned, that is starting here in, in a day or so.
Amazingly to tell you how well Bolton and Mink was, they knocked on every one of our doors, and gave us a letter, if you didn't answer your door, they put a letter in your door. I got both, so, I talked to him and got the letter, so, kudos to Bolton and Mink.
With the concrete, you need to cure seven days, they do need to stay off it, so you will be seeing people.
Parking.
Parking in different areas.
They cannot park on Main Street though, they have to park on their side streets, right?
I don't know how you can.
Um, so, so this pouring, the days they're pouring was Thursday and Friday, yeah, you'll have to stay off of Main Street completely. For the weekend, you can park right in front of your curb, cause obviously there won't be any work, but by Monday morning, we would want you, you know, back to parking on the sides, um. Until that reclaim work has happened, and, but each night, essentially, you'd be able to go back and park in front of your curb for, you know, not having to walk a significant distance to your house, but. You know, each day during construction, we'd ask that you're out of the way so that the equipment can do its job, so. And again, this is just essentially Thursday to Thursday, and then, once that concrete's cured, they'll basically. Make your driveways passable again, where then you can just get right back in, so it's this coming Thursday through more or less next week.
So is that up to you, and then the other thing, uh, because we had discussed last how that we'd be bringing back ideas and just options for the holiday lights display possibility. Coming to Iscany here, um, Alyssa's on vacation today and this week, so that will be brought next COW, so it'll be in September, that will bring all those options forward, so there's good discussions on, on exact costs. Layout designs and all those for consideration.
Okay, so I, I, I do have one last thing.